Good evening, everyone. Welcome and thank you for being here for the work session of the Board of Commissioners for the month of December 2019. I would ask our Chief of Police, John Viola, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, our God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law.
Thank you, Chief. We were to have two presentations this evening, but one is going to be delayed. The Historical Commission is going to make their presentation in January instead of this evening. So we'll begin with the second presentation from the Ice Rink Advisory Board, Adam Terranova, present, give us a year-end update.
Great. Thank you for having us. It's nice to be in front of everybody again, another year from it. This is Rich, another member of the board. And the ice rink advisory board, also known as the scadium, continues to really do well in a township. We're really in a unique place here because the investment that the township made many years ago is still paying great dividends for the rink, or I'm sorry, for the township, but as well as the people that live within here. So, you know, we're very happy to come up here and tell you guys all the good stuff. We're home to a lot of teams. First and foremost, the Haverford Ice Hockey Club, all made up of township residents from around here. We have a travel hockey team, the Haverford Hawks, that have teams in all age groups from eight through 18. We also do college with, you know, St. Joe's University. And then there's other high schools that practice in here, Cardinal O'Hara being one of them, Episcopal, and many, many others. Some of the biggest things we've improved upon recently has been really as the Ice Rink Advisory Board, developing people into the sports that are used through there. We've partnered with the Philadelphia Flyers and had the rookie program come through here, which is phenomenal. People sign up, they get free equipment, everything through it, and really generate the interest in a lot of different skating skills throughout there. And I'll turn it over to you to kind of talk about some.
The last couple of years, we've been tasked with trying to lower our footprint and our operating cost, being more sustainable to energy usage, and try to keep our costs down, knowing that the building is getting a little bit of age under its belt and some of the other items in the infrastructure need to be replaced. We've made considerable improvements on the electrical lighting with all LED fixtures. That's just finished up within the last two, two and a half months, so we're tracking our energy savings with the LED fixtures. We also put in a vapor barrier ceiling that will contribute to lowering the operating costs for heating and cooling, also keeping the ice at a consistent level. Over the next year or so, we're going to look at other ways to lower our operating cost, keep costs in line, while still offering the same programs. Because we are maximizing our ice time now, our programs are generally full. We operate in the black now for several years in a row, and we contribute to the township's income and to the general fund. So with that, there's also a downside to that, and that's the building's age, the infrastructure, some of the equipment. And you'll see later down in the report, and when you receive it on email electronically, that some of the systems need to be looked at. They need to be budgeted for replacement because some of them are past their usable life expectancy. So what we're trying to do as a committee is try to identify those items and repair those before they're a critical item, before it shuts the scadium down, rendering us with no income. So we asked that the commissioners take a look at the budget, some of the equipment that we need to replace over the next few years, and work with us as a group to try and identify that. Put money aside so it doesn't come to an emergency, and we can replace those pieces of equipment on a scheduled basis.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that, you know, we want to find out what is possible, what's not possible. Is it possible to, you know, contribute upfront towards, you know, out of the income we're making now, towards a big replacement of a big, you know, piece of condenser equipment that maybe, you know, $100,000 or more in on that? So that's where we're asking for a little bit of guidance from the commissioners and from the township manager, what is possible, what is not. And really, the next thing we want to work on inside our in-year budget is really making the ice rink one of the anchors of, you know, the proverbial Main Street, how to, you know, the entranceway, the new facade that's going to be coming in there. Done a lot in there. We also had new flooring in there. The whole place is going to look beautiful here very shortly, you know, with all the improvements we've done. But we want to work on the entranceway this coming fiscal year to really just make it more energy efficient, and then you're walking through into a big, beautiful place. You know, we have a lot of big plans for the rink, and we're excited about it, and, you know, thank you guys for all your support. You guys have any questions for us?
I'm just curious as to what your capital needs are in the next three to five years. Do you have a...
We do have some compressor equipment that needs to be replaced. It's past its usable life expectancy. It was estimated that some of the compressor equipment could be upwards of $200,000. However, with the variable speed equipment that we're putting in now, it lowers your operating costs drastically over what we have. So the $200,000 may be out of pocket, but over the course of its life, it will save us considerable dollars on a month-to-month basis.
Yeah, the ice rink has, one of the ways ice rinks are built, especially, you know, back then, a lot of redundancies. We have, you know, two cooling towers, two compressors, and what we need to do is really to stay on top of which one, you know, and this is a little bit more of a tactical level thing, but hey, do we run one out when this one goes, switch over, replace it? You know, these are the kinds of, you know, elements that we're working on, on a tactical level. We want to make you guys aware that some of these things are going to be coming due in the next five years or so.
Have you been working with our township manager and finance director in making your needs known?
We've been working with, through Rick, to be able to do that. Rick is the scadium manager, correct?
Okay, so Amy, you're familiar with these requests?
Yes, yes, I am. Couple of things with the years, I think Mr. Turnbull was thinking maybe electrical compressors would be a little further in the future, but if the need is that we have to move them sooner, we can do that, I guess, when the time comes to really evaluate it.
We've actually, with the township's help, replaced some key pieces of the electrical equipment. The main switchgear or the main control panel was replaced in the last two years, so that's got us a little bit more life expectancy out of some of the other equipment also. So we've been very targeted in what we've been replacing, so we don't have a failure, it doesn't turn into emergency work, but we have been working with the Pinoni Report also to identify what life expectancy would be.
As far as the scadium plaza that you touched on, the entranceway, the board might remember, we had put this out for bid quite a while ago, and the bids came in very outside the scope of what the original estimate was. So we've gone back through the drawing board, and I think the advisory board's aware, I think Rick has kept you up to speed. So they came back with a much simpler design, but I think it's going to be very attractive. I think Rick's excited about it, and we'll be presenting that to the board and going out to bid for that early '20.
Yeah, and we are as well. We've seen it, and we're very excited. Much better than, much better and simpler than the first one with it. And Amy, thank you for your help in this, you know, in the budgeting. We have, even on our capital needs, have come down, you know, capital, we're budgeting here. By the time we get down into what we need, you know, we definitely feel like we've done our job to, you know, get it as cost-efficiently as we can.
You always start here with Amy, and you end up here.
Bingo. Took a few years to learn that.
How are the locker rooms? I mean, is still everything adequate there? You have any short-term and long-term needs there?
Short-term, the locker rooms have been on a repair basis, mainly because we know we have to budget something for either renovation of one or two locker rooms at a time, but we've been on a repair basis for the locker rooms. They do need some help. We are looking into LED lighting for the locker rooms based on motion sensing, instead of leaving the lights on, again, to lower our monthly electric bills. So we're targeting them for 2020 also.
And there's also some other things, because I think, you know, the smell inside a locker room is a little bit, there's, since the last time we've updated the locker rooms, there's newer technologies, newer mats where you can kind of walk in with the $100 Home Depot washer and, you know, really get the smell out and not let it stay underneath a rubber mat.
And is use at the point yet where you want to have a dedicated female locker room at this point? Certainly, we're seeing more female players.
We do have accommodations for females in a female locker room, but it's a much smaller locker room, and it's separate and set aside from the remaining locker rooms. We had some designs for revamping some of the locker rooms and maybe pushing out one of the walls on the side near the houses, not the parking lot side, but it was cost prohibitive at that point. We can resurrect that at any time, we can do a scaled-down version of that, and maybe look at just two locker rooms instead of multiple locker rooms.
Wait, no, we have four across the back?
We have four across the back.
We have four.
Each, between each, the common shower, right?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, and one of the other options that we've looked into in the past is, over top of when you walk into the rink, where the skate rental is, to go up on top of there to possibly build that out as well for, you know, the female players to be able to come down. Then that way, you keep all the players in the same base.
Stuffed downstairs.
That's the hard part.
Skates.
Maybe we move the office up there and keep the locker room on the ground floor.
Yeah.
Well, and also, I mean, on Sundays, I don't know how often it comes up, but in the hockey clinic, you've got, you've got older kids changing into hockey gear, and then you get children changing with parents, changing with moms, you know what I mean? So, I mean, I don't know whether that's just simply a programming issue of dedicating one locker room to family locker room, the other locker room to older players.
It really is, and it's, you know, one of the things that, you know, we need to do a better job of with the rink manager to be able to program it that way. USA Hockey in particular is very adamant about locker room protocols and has a list to go out there, so it's age group with parents. I mean, I was fortunate enough, this past weekend, did it with that too, and I'm like, wait, who's, you know, I'm used to being in a locker room, my son plays on an 8U team, and it's just like, wait, this was a little bit awkward for me as a parent being in and around there, so I understand completely.
Obviously, the industry, I mean, that's, every rink is facing that.
Yeah.
You guys are aware of it.
And ours, again, going back to the age of the rink, it was built when a rink was just a box and locker rooms, just put them in the back, you know, where the smell is. And now we have to accommodate for different groups because the sports have exploded in this area. I mentioned maximizing ice time. We have our ice time pretty much to a maximum capacity at this point.
I don't know whether you can put it up on the screen, but that's next week's ice time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And... There's not many, not many slots left.
And we try to maximize, you know, worked with Rick early on, you know, going back about four or five years, to really just work on six, eight, and midnight, how do we maximize that time and fill in the slots? And, you know, the programming that we've put in there to develop kids has really been, you know, crucial for it. And we are an in-demand ice rink. You know, ice slots are in demand in this area. The average cost is about $400 per hour out there. We're currently at $360 per hour, and you just can't buy them. I don't know if any, they're not out there to, every week to get, everything's one-off. I mean, the rink itself has also had a longstanding first right of refusal policy on that, where, hey, I want ice, great, you know, get your next in line to get ice. So, I mean, we, just the way it's been run for a lot of years, and without too much pushback on it, just want to make you guys aware.
Well, I mean, you know, lockers are nice, making it smell better is fine. I mean, the three most important things, the ice surface, the boards, and the glass, and, I mean, that's really top-notch at our scadium.
It's very good.
It is, it absolutely is. I officiate ice hockey, so I see, and I work at a scadium a good amount of times, and when I see the coaches come back, they're like, hey, I used to play here as a kid, wow, the lighting in here is great, the ice is great. The compliments we get off of the ice and the lighting and how it looks has always been very well received within that community.
That's actually what contributes to that schedule being so full.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you. Next item for discussion is vacant properties.
Could I just ask one question of the board? I assume that the board worked with Rick on the budget presentation this year, and the board has gotten, is satisfied with what the scadium is getting in the 2020 budget?
Well, we went through the first round.
Yeah.
So we have some of the first-round numbers, and it's earmarked for certain items. I think what we need to do is sit down and see which are more critical and which would be most cost-effective. The doors and the entrance to limit the amount of air infiltration is probably high on the list this year, and it wasn't last year.
You have between now and next Monday to let the manager know, or somebody sympathetic here on the board perhaps know whether or not you want changes to the 2020 budget.
Is this the capital budget or the working budget?
Well, the capital budget's a lot easier to work with, because that's just, you know, that's aspirational.
Yes.
As far as your working funds that you need for 2020 and the expenses you plan to do in 2020, just be aware, you're in that period right now between our adoption of the first budget and our final adoption of the budget, and obviously, you know, the Ice Rink Advisory Board has, their recommendations have a lot more financial ramifications for our budget than, let's say, Shade Tree Commission does or somebody like that. So to the extent that you folks are involved in this and have examined this, don't miss this opportunity this week to either confirm that all is good or to see whether or not there's something else you're trying to accomplish.
We will look through it and be in touch. Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, John. Next on the agenda is a discussion of vacant properties, and this has been an issue in a number of wards in the township with abandoned houses, particularly in Commissioner D'Amelio's ward and Commissioner Holmes' ward at one point. So I don't know, Steve, you want to, in the background, start this discussion? I know Jim Byrne may want to join in.
And we'll certainly have Mr. Byrne speak about this issue, but I think this is affecting all of our wards, and if this board recalls, we had an athletic discussion about this several months ago, about what this township can do, as I believe that many of our residents are basically being held hostage by these vacant properties. There's, you know, the grass is growing high in the front and the back, there's the structure itself being decaying, and rodents being, going into vacant homes, and any residents are really putting up with this. And, you know, look to this board, look to the township to help in any way we can. So we've had several discussions about what we can do, including possibly increasing fines. I don't know where we went with this, I just wanted to bring this up again so that the residents know that we just didn't drop this and forget about it.
It is a, it's an excellent discussion point, Commissioner D'Amelio, and part of the benefit of discussing it right now is to, is to talk about people having reasonable expectations, what the township can do, what the township can't do in these circumstances. It's, I've had a number of these houses in the sixth ward, and we're all, you know, the overwhelming majority of the homes in the sixth ward are semi-detached and have somebody who's been attached to a home that's been vacant for 18 years. And, you know, the grass only gets cut, they get three or four violations, and then whatever bank or absentee owner does it, takes care of it. The taxes get paid frequently enough not to, you know, not to start foreclosure procedures, and it's very hard as a commissioner to explain to these folks that there's very little we can do in those, in the circumstances of an absentee owner who's just skating, you know, on the edge of, you know, enough violations to get attention, but not enough violations for us to be able to act, you know, with some severity.
I think we decided that in extreme cases that we would send a solicitor to ask the judge to impose the highest maximum amount of fines. Am I correct, Mr. Byrne?
Yes, yes. In fact, since our last discussion of this, we, my office has been accompanying the Code Reinforcements Department to a number of the hearings, just about all the hearings where there are citations issued, so we have been doing that.
What would be the maximum fine?
The maximum fine, I believe, is $1,000.
And what's the, what...
The problem is that oftentimes, I mean, there are some homes that are vacant, and then they're very difficult to track down, and then there are other homes that are not really entirely vacant, but they have people in them that maybe are not, you know, doing so well themselves in terms of, you know, how their capacity is, you know? So you're kind of walking a fine line a lot of times between, you know, trying to help a person out and not harming somebody who's already down on their luck, and trying to keep the rest of the neighborhood together. So, I mean, we've been working pretty carefully with Joe's office and with, and with the district justice offices, we've been, you know, like I said, going to the hearings and trying to do as much as we can to keep, you know, to keep that balance, yeah, and keep the pressure on. But it is a problem, and I can tell you from representing other towns, it's not just this town, you know, it's everywhere, you know? And it's the same problem. It's, the problem becomes, you know, you have the people that are not well, or you have people that are not in the homes, you know? And when they're not in the homes, you can put a little more pressure, but, you know, just because you put a little more pressure doesn't mean you're going to have the place all cleaned up in a year or something, you know? It's, you know, if it's a big bank, for instance, that owns the place, and, you know, they'll just do what they need to do to save the house, and then, you know, it becomes a situation where it takes years to get it. But I can tell you that we are, we're on it, we're, Joe, we're probably weekly on the phone with you folks, if not more often than that, right?
We have stepped it up, and we have checked every avenue legally that the township can look at, and Jim Burns has come with his staff at our hearings to make sure that the judge knows that we are trying to do the best we can for the residents.
Are they getting it, Joe? Do they understand the seriousness of this?
If it's a house that someone is living in, we try to help the resident, address the situation.
And I understand that.
If someone's not occupying the property, and a bank has it, we're asking after the second offense for max fine and per diem fines, which is per day.
Right, right. And I understand that. I mean, people certainly down on their luck, I certainly understand, I mean, trying to work with them, but I'm talking about homes that are owned by banks or real estate companies that are, that just ignore our codes and ignore our neighbors.
We've leaned a number of them too, Commissioner. We've leaned a number of the houses, you know, when we've gone out and done work, and, you know, we've been going after them very aggressively, and it's just an unfortunate problem.
So what is the update on that home on Lincoln, Joe? You know, has that gone to court?
It's still in foreclosure, it's in bankruptcy. The bank owns it, and they're trying to satisfy the mortgage at this point, because it's upside down.
So that situation, I mean, I think unfortunately, the expectation of a lot of residents is that the township is all-powerful and can do whatever it wants and can change the situation overnight, but that's a situation where that could be tied up, it's upside down, but it could be tied up from court for an indefinite period of time, right?
For bankruptcy, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. You can't even touch it.
You can't even touch it.
You can't do much to them at all when they're in the bankruptcy.
That's just amazing.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand it, but I just...
It's frustrating, but...
It's so frustrating that residents have to, I mean, I would not want to live next door to that. It's a disgrace.
Jim raised a good issue about the township working. In some wards in the sixth ward, and I know others have this, where you have the semi-detached homes and you have row homes, there where the neglect is actually causing physical harm, or certainly the threat of physical harm to another property, especially a property that shares a firewall, those are places where the township is more empowered to act, I mean, because then we're dealing with health, safety, and welfare at that point, not just... And that's a much stronger weapon against, you know, what are otherwise very strong property rights that folks have. So, you know, that is an angle for any of the commissioners who find, you know, constituents that are very frustrated about issues, you know, examine the health, safety, and welfare issues associated with the people that are the immediate neighbors, and it helps the township articulate a case for more direct action.
Right.
Then we get a lien, that sometimes moves a bank or moves some out-of-town property owner into more action when it's not just fines, but now it's a lien against the property.
Well, I think eventually, they do turn into health and safety issues because, especially if you get rodents. I mean, rodents going after pets, which was happening, you know, I mean, residents were very concerned that they would bite their children, which, who wouldn't be? You know, that is a, that is a health and safety issue. Or the facade coming down, likely to hurt someone.
Right, we've had those instances, and we, and, you know, when that happens, Joe and Dave's office will go out and take a look to see if, you know, are there any structural problems with the house? Is it something that's going to hurt somebody? Is it going to pull down the house next to it? You know, are there rodents going into the other house, especially in a house where they're joined together because, you know, you can't see the whole outside because one wall's, you know, connected to the other? But I can tell you that we are really, I mean, and I can't take credit for it, I mean, it's Joe's office.
Oh, he's done a great job, Joe. I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
But we have been accompanying them since the last time that this discussion came up. I think we've been to just about every hearing, right, Joe?
Yes, only one that's going to find, yes.
Yeah.
As long as the district justice, that's where it goes, before them.
Right.
As long as they understand what the residents and the township, now they should have a full understanding of what's happening, I would hope.
Yes, Commissioner, anything that's life and safety, township manager and I sit down together, and we do work the problem out, make sure it's safe for the community.
Thank you. I do appreciate everything, Joe. You do a fantastic job with that. I know you, it's frustrating, too.
Jim, can I ask about the property at 435 Sagamore Road? For years, it's been vacant, and as far as the reports, I mean, yes, the house is falling apart, just go around and look at it. They, every now and again, they cut the grass, and that's all they do, and I don't know why we can't lien the property and go to court with them and win the battle. It's been done many a time in the past, but nothing's happening. The gentleman sat right out here in the audience and said he moved out of North Philadelphia to come here, not to find what he sees, because it's a disgrace, that's why I moved out of North Philadelphia. That's what that gentleman on Sagamore Road said. The next-door neighbor who has to live next to all this crap, which it is, the whole backyard is nothing but boards and everything else just laying there, nobody's maintaining anything. So, you know, what I want to know is, these gentlemen left that night, I've never heard from them since, because they've given up on us, because they just feel we don't care. Well, I do care, and I do think there's more we can do, but we got to do it, and we can't just sit on our butts and do nothing. That's my speech. I'll give you the address again, 435 Sagamore, it's right across from Brookline School, and it's right there, and there's plenty of work that can be done, and if you lien the house, do it, lien the property, and then that's that. At least the next-door neighbor can live in peace.
You want to address that case, Joe, or...
We have one for with that, but it is at a state. We looked, and we found different owners that this time is in foreclosure, and at this time, there's no life and safety issues we can go in and, on the property to fix. Everything's safe, the grass has been cut, we haven't seen any rodents or any activity, we've checked this several times, so we are on top of that issue.
I think we have lien that house as well, Joe?
Yes, we have.
Can I ask a question? Maybe our, some of the colleagues that are attorneys can answer this. Is there any way that the states, the states can strengthen these laws or give us more jurisdiction, or no?
Well, there is, we do have, we have pretty good ordinances in this town already, but there is a, there's another act, I guess, that we could enact, which would be the, it's called the State Abandoned and Belated Property Conservatorship Act. And, but in order for a property to be considered abandoned under that act, there's a number of conditions that have to be met, and it's, they have to be not legally occupied for 12 months, not actively marketed for the past 60 days, not subject to a pending foreclosure. The court has to determine that the physical structure to be a public nuisance, and that the building is in need of substantial rehabilitation, and that the building is unfit for, unfit for human habitation, and a couple other little items, but, you know...
Well, that's easy.
Well, we can enact that, we can enact that ordinance, but you've got to, you know, then I guess, you know, the other thing you got to weigh is, you know, are, which, can, there's, I think as we talked about this, because we've gone over this a couple of times with Joe's office and with Dave, and the, of the properties that we have a problem with now, I don't think any of them qualify. Did we determine that, Joe?
No, they do not qualify.
None of them would.
Lincoln doesn't because it's in foreclosure? That's the only criteria I saw that it doesn't meet.
Right.
It's in foreclosure, Joe?
But it's only one, it's only one, you only need one.
It's one out of the four, I thought. It's one out of the four, I thought.
Taxes have to not be paid for three years consecutive, and they are paid, taxes are paid up to date.
Oh, is, is that what you said, taxes?
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I, I didn't have the entire act in front of me, but that might be one of them, yeah.
The act doesn't address taxes. The problem is that the definition of substantial rehabilitation is a significant burden to overcome, because it need, has to have, it need improvements that are over 15% of the property value or a whole, there's a whole checklist of things. It's possible to enact it, but it's, it will only address at most a very small percentage of the properties.
I, I get that, but even if it's a small percentage, we're doing something more.
But it, but it, yeah, you're, you're right. And, but even...
You know, we need to be doing something more, and that's...
The only caveat, the only caveat that I do want to give you, that is, you know, just because you enact another ordinance doesn't mean that anything is going to happen, you know? Like, we can, we can try and enforce it, we can do whatever we can do. But, you know, I, I've been in positions, or in cases where the, uh, in, in places where the Conservatorship Act is in play, and, you know, it's still a number of years before anything really, anything happens, you know? So it's not a, it's not an overnight cure.
Joe, do you know the exact number of properties that we're having problems with in this township? Do you have any idea?
Well, in violations or not corrected, we're probably about a, at most a dozen, at the most.
Well, it depends on what your definition of problem is. I mean, we've got a dozen abandoned properties in the sixth ward, but they're not necessarily bothering anybody. But, um, but to answer your question more generally, Commissioner Emilio, it, it still shouldn't be, it should be difficult for any government to take over a property. It, it is, I mean, our, our, our federal constitution, all of our state constitutions, all list in their first rights of individuals, the right to be, you know, secure in their property. And so it's, it, it's difficult, you know, when you're dealing with a blighted property. Um, and it's, and it's more difficult when you're dealing with blighted property and people are living within it and they're doing everything they can, or they've either don't have the financial ability to do it, or may not at the time have the, um, have the psychic ability to handle it. But it just shouldn't be that easy for government to repossess properties and take control of them.
Well, well, okay, I agree with that. But, but what about the rights of the residents that live on the street or next door to it, or directly next door to it, if they're attached? I mean, it just seems incredibly unfair. I, I'm not saying we should take every property. I'm saying that, you know, we have to try to do something more than what we're doing now. And if that's another act that we can try, then if, if it makes banks, you know, um, adhere to our codes, then so be it.
Right. Just, I mean, I could interject. I mean, I, I think part of, I think saying if it makes banks is oversimplifying it a little bit, because it's not always just banks. I mean, sometimes it is a person who, for whatever reason, has financial difficulties or someone passes away and the children live out of state or something. I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying, and I hear it's a natural frustration, and I certainly talk into residents about it. I get it. Um, but I, I, I think you just have to be careful in terms of what ordinances we're making and the presentation we're making to the public as to what we're gonna do to actual people's properties. And certainly, you, a person who has a property interest is, is more important than the neighbor's property interest in it.
Well, I agree with that.
You're, um...
Everybody's property's important.
Here, that, that's a good point, Commissioner. I mean, a, a, a lot of problems that we run into are estate-type problems where, you know, the, the families are fighting amongst themselves as to who owns the house and who doesn't want the house, or, and sometimes the houses are just not, you know, in, in the type of shape, and maybe they're underwater on their mortgage, uh, and the, you know, the people that are going to inherit it are saying, we don't want it, you know? And, and it becomes a real, real chore to try and figure out who, who is responsible.
And there's one provision in, in this, in the abandoned blighted property, uh, act that deals with the process that gives me concern, because it appoints a conservator after notice and everything, which is not a quick process by any stretch. But we would be, we, the, who, we would be the petitioner, have to have a preliminary plan with cost estimates for rehab, rehabilitating the building, to bring it in compliance with all municipal codes, um, and have an anticipated funding source for making those improvements. And unless we have someone else, that, that becomes, that falls on the township. And that's, to me, the biggest concern, because it, you know, I, I don't know, you know, how well codes or Dave Pino, how easy it is to come up with those numbers. And then are we gonna be sitting in the seat of the conservator and funding it? That's the, of all of the issues, that's the one within this act that, that concerns me the most.
Well, you know, we're not talking about 54,000 homes. So, we're only talking about a handful of homes that could be ruining neighborhood. So it's not like we're gonna be taking over thousands of homes. We're not doing that. I, I think that whatever we can do to help the residents that are dealing with this situation, as I said in the past, not one of us would want to live next door to something like that. Not one of them. And if it was one of us, we would be going Cole and Joey just about every day to do something, which we do now with this problem.
But you know what? I, I, I'm sorry, Steve. I, I gotta push back, you know? I did live across from this. I've lived in my house for 21 years, and for 18 years, I had one across the street. I, I, I worked with the township and with the neighbors, and we, we worked within the confines of the law. People now live there, and it's great. But I, I, to suggest that, that, that this is a consequence of the none of the nine of us having personal involvement. It's all of us. All of us live in neighborhoods at one time or other had these issues. Some of us live directly across the street from these houses. So, um, I, I appreciate your, 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 your fire on this, and I have the same fire. I just, I want us, Commissioner McCloskey raises a very good issue. We have to be careful to measure, to, we have to be careful, you know, not to create unreasonable expectations on people's part as to what we're going to do and what we're frankly capable to, of doing under the law with regard to these homes. Um, as I understand this act, this act exists already. It's just a question of whether we want to exercise options under it. Is that right?
We would have to adopt a local ordinance.
Adopt a local ordinance, empowering us to...
If you made that suggestion, I suggest that, that we adopt that ordinance. It's something small, it's something, it's another step we can take, whatever measures we can take to, to get people to, or, banks that, I'm talking more about banks. I understand, as I said before, people that are down on their luck. I get that.
We don't get to pass ordinances that we differentiate between property owner being a bank...
I get that too, but, but then that's...
And a little old lady. Like, you have to pass an ordinance that applies equally to a bank and to a little old lady.
So, so let's do it then.
All right. I'm just saying, as long as we understand...
I understand that.
Must do it then.
Then why don't we, rather than continue this discussion, we can all work with Mr. Byrne. We'll draft an ordinance that's gonna be consistent with this, with the state act, because it has to be. And then we can discuss it with the ordinance in front of us. And then, you know, we'll vote on it a, as it comes to us to vote, because I think we're gonna end up with the same discussion then. But right now, most people don't have the ordinance, the state law in front of them, don't have the ordinance in front of us. So it'll make us all more informed. Um, and then we can have that discussion, bring it to a vote and see where it goes.
Totally agree. Thank you.
Might I add, at least, that we get some analysis from, uh, our solicitor as to the pros and cons of taking, of, of adopting this ordinance?
Sure, I'd be happy to do it.
And if there are examples that you're aware of from other towns, um, that have adopted this, of where it has, um, has, uh, resulted in more, you know, positive reaction by absentee owners or by banks or by mortgageors or anybody like that, um, if, if that information is out there, um, provide that to us.
Yeah, I'm sure we have a couple. I, I know, I personally have been involved in a couple, and I'll, I'll have, uh, I'll check with the rest of the office. I think we probably brought up with the list of some homes.
Can I use, can I use these words? Detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the neighbors and the community. How's that?
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Siegel, thank you for taking that on as Chair of Ordinance Committee. And, uh, Jimmy, you'll be weighing in as well. Okay? So we'll look forward to, I guess, continuing this discussion probably January, February.
Yeah, I mean, it won't, the ordinance is easy to draft, um, but it, you know...
Okay. Okay. Any, any other thing to add on that topic? Uh, next agenda item is Commissioner Committee Updates. Um, we have Commissioner Committee Updates both at the work session and the regular meeting. And this is up for discussion with the board. Um, I don't think we need them, uh, on both agendas. My, my suggestion would be that we have it during the work session unless anybody feels strongly otherwise. I'm not sure we need... Anybody disagree with that?
No.
No.
So we'll do the Commissioner Committee Updates going forward during the work session? Is that, did anybody have a country? Okay, so, any Commissioner Committee?
I would suggest that if the Commissioner Committee Update is specific to something we're going to act on, um, then we should be prepared for discussion at the regular, at the official meeting. But to the extent that it's just discussion updates, that makes perfect sense. I just wouldn't rule it out at the full meeting if we're acting.
I agree. That makes sense. Uh, so are there any Commissioner Committee Updates?
Yes, there's a, the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee met last week. Um, we've been meeting, this is about the third meeting. In the very near future, we're starting to have a resident outreach. There should be a questionnaire that residents can fill out either online or mail in. Um, the whole purpose of this is to, um, we're, the comprehensive plan is to look at where the township's gonna go over the next 10 to 15 years. So the questionnaire will be for residents to give input of what they feel are our biggest needs, where they would like, what changes they would like to see. Uh, this will be compiled, um, and there'll be feedback to residents about that. And then also in February, we're gonna be having sometime probably late February, our first, uh, public outreach meeting. Again, it's an opportunity then for residents to come to, um, give, uh, one-to-one, uh, feedback to the committee. The whole, uh, plan, you know, we anticipate it will, there'll be more, um, opportunities for public input. This, this probably will be about a year-long process. But, um, I am putting encourage residents to, um, take the opportunity to fill out the questionnaires, to come to the meetings. Um, we're actually, the, uh, Steering Committee meetings are also open to the public. I believe our next one is January 8th, and it will be published on the township website.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Any other Commissioner Committee Updates?
Yeah, I, I just want to ask you on this, uh, this update, but down here where it says contract awards, Brookline School demolition bid opening is Monday, December 2nd, which is today. Can you tell me, did we vote to demolish the school?
We're gonna get to that, Jimmy.
Okay.
During, later in the agenda. Uh, any other Commissioner Committee Updates? Okay, well, our Chief of Police, John Viola, for the crime update, and report that there are two bears, not one, that we're looking for.
Thank you, Commissioner, for a monthly report for November. We had 28 criminal arrests, five juvenile arrests, 211 traffic citations, 16 non-traffic, 233 warnings and 356 parking tickets. No robberies, no burglaries. One attempt in the unit block of Ormond Avenue, where two males were banging on the front door of the residence, didn't answer the door. They went around back and tried to break into the house. She confronted them, they ran off. We had aggravated assault at the 1,000 block of Westchester Pike. It was a domestic, uh, where someone was stabbed. Uh, the female suspect was taken into custody and charged with aggravated assault. Um, one motor vehicle theft, a unit block of, uh, West Monona for an abandoned car. So we're, we're not even treating it as, as a motor vehicle theft in, in the sense it was sitting there, uh, for quite some time in an alleyway. So it has been removed. And, uh, the owner's trying to track it down at this point. We had, only had seven, uh, vehicle, uh, attempts, thefts from vehicles. Uh, five of them were in recreation areas, and that, uh, attributes to people leaving their pocketbooks in the cars or something of value, and the windows are broken and they're removed. This happens very quickly, and it always happens in the, in the daylight hours. So, once again, we'll impress that any valuables should be locked in the trunk when you get out of the car, and especially at nighttime, when you go home to lock your car. We had six, uh, sorry, nine K-9 usages and three arrests, three drug arrests out of those nine usages. Uh, the bear update, uh, I sent you all a little information over the weekend. Uh, we've had multiple sightings. The most recent one, I believe, last night was in Springfield Township, uh, talking to the game commission. They feel that there are two juvenile bears out in the area. So, um, you know, the idea is that hopefully they can track it down.
Don't they know we have a curfew?
What's that? There's no curfew, no.
Tell them.
Uh, so they're, they're still wandering around and, and we, if anybody should come in contact with the bear, they, I'm told they are not aggressive unless they're cornered. Just go the other way. And if they do come at you, make a lot of noise, waving your arms, and, uh, hope for the best.
Hope that works.
I don't have anything else on that. So, uh, I'm gonna give you a little information you're not gonna be happy to hear about. Uh, we were informed late this afternoon that there's gonna be a planned PICO outage on Westchester Pike, starting around Coles, all the way up to Monona Road for 12 consecutive days, eight hours a day. Now, I just got the maps sent to me this afternoon. You got it at the same time. Yeah, I, yes. So this was supposedly brought up at the, um, open house here in October, when PICO was here. Uh, I questioned her extensively about it, because we had, really had no knowledge of it. And the, how I found about it, about it was, the manager of the Mellon Bank, uh, not the Mellon Bank, I'm sorry, Wells Fargo Bank, asked me about, the gentleman came in and informed me that there was gonna be a power outage, and he had no identification. So I start tracking it back. So, all I found out at that time, which was late last week, and in fact it was true, I didn't realize the extent of it. It's, it's major. Uh, it's gonna affect a lot of, most of the businesses along Westchester Pike and a lot of residential properties. So, um, I'll share the maps with you, uh, take a little time to look at them on a bigger screen and, and see what's gonna be out. But they, they're telling us this has been planned since last year. Um, and we have no control over it, obviously.
Since last year, they just haven't told anybody about it.
Well, I, I agree with you. And I told her that. I said, we had no knowledge of it. And she came back and said what was presented at the October open house. I said, that was October house, December.
The October, the, their meeting was only for, uh, residents who were affected by, by that thing. So, my residents who are gonna be affected by this weren't allowed to go to that meeting.
Not gonna get an argument from you, Commissioner.
They weren't informed, though. Yeah, they weren't...
They weren't invited to the meeting.
Yeah, you're not gonna get an argument for that. And I, I agree with you. We're, I was really...
What's the reason for the, what's the reason?
Well, it's, they're, they're changing over a power line from all the issues they're having with power outages, uh, they're putting it, changing it to a new transmission line. Over the weekend, they put a temporary power station up, um, at, at the 900 North Eagle, back, somewhere back in there, I guess, for part of that. Yes, exactly. So, and that was there once before also.
Right, it's not the first time.
I'll send this map to you, maps, your multiple maps. Uh, but it is, uh, I know a lot of the business are really, really upset about it, because you lost eight hours worth of, uh...
What's the period again?
It's eight days, starting tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM.
Starting tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM.
And 12 hours, it's gonna be up to...
Eight hours, eight hours.
What about residents who are on, you know, who respirators, oxygen tanks, this sort of stuff? We get no knowledge of this stuff?
Well, they're supposed to be, they're supposed to be, I assume, the residents are notified. They're, they're supposed to be going door to door to the one, to the businesses as residents that are affected.
I did ask that question.
I live along that corridor. Nobody has nothing...
You have gotten a letter or call or anything?
Maybe, maybe your, maybe your power's not going out then, Commissioner.
Well, no, I'll, I'll look, I just, I just...
They're obligated to make, give notice to residents that are affected by any outage.
What she told me was our, our Delaware County representative, she told me was that every business was notified by the subcontractor, and every house or business was affected would have gotten a reverse phone call. I thought that was kind of weak myself. I thought a letter would have been more appropriate.
Letter would be more appropriate.
So, uh, but...
I can guarantee you that, that, that wasn't done.
Yeah. So, like I said, we, we would have notified you sooner if we would have known about it ourselves.
I live right there. There's no way my power...
You were here, I was making phone calls with Michelle.
What approvals does PICO need to, to, to do that? They don't need any approvals from us?
Public utility.
They just, their, public utility is, gives them the, the power to do basically whatever they want, whenever they want to do it.
That's correct.
So we can't, they don't need any kind of highway occupancy or any kind of, any kind of permits from us?
Yeah.
And how far off the road does it include?
Commissioners, there's so many maps here, uh, that I, really, I was looking at them on my iPad. It was difficult to try and figure it out. They're all highlighted of where it's. So I'll send them to you. Take a look and see what, uh, what, what you see, and then, uh, you get a little more information. Dave, you have them there, don't you too?
In the middle of winter.
I received an email during meetings this evening, so I didn't have a chance to read it.
Okay. So soon as, soon as I sit down, I'll, I'll send them out to you.
See, the concern is that you have a lot of senior citizens.
I agree.
And we have an, you know, an older elderly population, and, I mean, they need someplace to go.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I was scheduled to go to a range day tomorrow. I'm going to stay in town because I think we're going to have some issues.
And there's all sorts of businesses up there that people use. What do...
We were really made aware of it because a phone call came into codes from Tip O'Leary's that they were notified they're going to be closed for eight hours or more, and they said they weren't aware of it. It ended up being back to Danny Marianne, and then came back to us. When I spoke to the PICO rep, she said, "Yes, the subcontractor went in there, spoke to somebody," whether it was filtered down to management, is another story, I can't answer that. But she said the man did speak to somebody.
PBS, all those. Awesome. Great job, PICO. Great job.
There are people watching this meeting right now, live, finding out they're not going to have power for the day.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Me being one of them.
I don't know if it affects you, so let me sit down and open it up.
If it's between township line...
Well, you're not until later on in the week.
Oh, okay.
It's consecutive days. It's not all at the same time. So you have time to prepare.
Yeah, but my residents are being affected.
So each business or residence will be affected for one eight-hour period, not for eight days?
That's a very important clarification.
Yes, that's correct.
Nobody's losing their power for more than eight hours?
That's correct, yes. So it's not the whole, the whole high tension...
Yeah, let's clarify this.
Thank you.
It still sucks.
So the woman with the oxygen tanks, she only loses her power?
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just trying to clarify.
I just want to make sure we don't clear it.
I have four grid maps that she sent me that are highlighted. So a section will be done tomorrow, that's eight hours. Then they move to another section the following day, it affects a different group of people, that's eight hours. So anybody who loses electricity is for one day, eight hours.
Are they bringing massive generator trucks where people are going to be able to deal with emergencies who didn't have...
They already have substations.
Well, that's just a, I'm not sure what that is. I'm not sure. Honestly, if we would have more time, we would have asked for a meeting, but it was late in the day when I got it, so...
Obviously, the item on Lawrence Road, the generator, isn't for that. It seems pretty far off.
It does seem pretty far off, but...
And that's been there before for unknown...
Yes, it has.
Because they brought that in Sunday morning.
Yes.
Unreal.
I have no more good news.
Okay, any other good news, Chief?
That's it, thank you. I'll send this to you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, looking at next week's agenda, we have the final 2020 budget adoption. There's one issue, there are a couple of issues outstanding. One might be the issue that Commissioner Holmes raised with regard to the stadium and what additional needs they might have. And also, Dave and Amy are working with, I guess Dave Penotti and our Director of Public Works, in deciding whether we want to have a 2020 street program. It would be a scaled-down version of about a half a million dollars if we were to proceed, paid for by liquid fuel funds. So, that's what we'll, you'll have an answer for us next week as to whether we want to proceed on that?
That's correct. We'll have a recommendation next week.
Okay. Does anyone on the Board have any questions or any discussion on our 2020 budget to be adopted next week? Okay, thank you, David, for your, and Amy for a great job, and Larry Holmes as well in helping produce this budget, which is a, what, 2.2%?
2% increase?
Yeah.
1.5.
1.5. Okay, that's better than 2.2. Thank you. And next week, we'll be accepting the Civil Service Commission's list and appointment of an entry-level police officer, so the Board will be considering entertaining, hiring one additional police officer. And that would get us to 69, and I understand from the Chief that we will be also looking at hiring an additional officer at some point early next year, which would get us to a full complement of 70 officers. Is that correct, Chief? Okay. Does anybody have any questions on that agenda item? Next is ordinance number P-26, 2019, second lease agreement with AT&amp;T, is a second reading, so we've already discussed this, and also had a first reading in our October meeting. Any additional questions on this proposed ordinance? Orders number P-27, 2019, sale of Glendale Road, again, a second reading. Any questions on this? Any discussion on it? Orders number P-28, 2019, traffic, second reading. Any questions, discussion? Orders number P-29, 2019, traffic reading would be a first reading, and this would be for special purpose parking at 2500 East County Line Road. I'm not sure which ward that is. Is that your Commissioner Holmes?
Sorry, which road?
2500 East County Line Road?
Yes, that's 101.
Okay. Any questions on that proposed ordinance? Next is Resolution 2163, 2019, which provides the, is a resolution providing the dates upon which this Board will meet. We'll meet on January 6th, 2020, on a reorganization, and then we'll meet in, regular meetings are outlined, they're all advertised. We'll meet each month, the second Monday of the month, with the exception of October 13th, which is the day after Columbus we'll meet, and also we'll have an additional budget meeting in November. In terms of the work session, I would like to suggest, recommend to this Board, and open it up for discussion, that we cancel the work session for June. There's already no work session for July, but also cancel it for August, with the condition that, only on the condition that the township manager and the President of the Board and the Vice President of the Board are in concurrence, that it makes no sense, there are slow months, and it seems to me that we may not need work sessions those months, and if we can avoid having to meet, and if we have to meet, the township manager will recommend that we do meet. So, do you agree with that, David?
It makes sense, and it would be for items that are significant in nature that would need to be acted on at that subsequent regular meeting. So, we would have some idea well in advance.
Well, in advance as to whether we'd want to have a meeting in June, July, or August?
That's correct. The work session we're talking about.
Yeah, the work session. So...
Could I just jump in for a second?
Sure.
Does it make sense to leave it on now and then cancel it later so that we don't have to go through the advertising?
These don't have to be advertised, I understand.
Well, they are, they're not advertised because we have them scheduled at the beginning of the year. So if you take them off at the beginning of the year...
Okay, so we can leave them on and then...
Leave them on and then cancel them as they, as...
Does that make sense? Okay. So, well, that will be the objective, and if we need the meetings, again, it would be the township manager in consultation with the President of the Board and also the Vice President to decide whether we do have a work session. But as of now, we'll leave them as presented in this resolution. Does anybody have any discussion or questions about that? Thank you, Jim, for that recommendation. Next is Resolution Number 2164, Underground Retention Water and Sewer Grant at Chatham-Glen Park. This is a small water and sewer grant, $500,000 that we're seeking. It has a 15% match, so it would be $75,000. And, Dave, I don't know whether Dave or Dave, Dave, have anything to add on this, this grant and the reasons?
I was identical in concept of what we completed a couple of years ago at Chatham Elementary School, where we put an underground storage facility, capture those intense rain events that we witnessed in the Chatham-Glen area, store the water, stormwater underground, hold it until the storm passes by, and then release it.
And how optimistic are we that we'll receive that grant? And do we have the $75,000 match in our budget if we were to receive that grant?
The second question you'd have to ask Amy or Dave. The first one, there's a, it's an extremely competitive grant. Boy, I had the figures a couple of weeks ago, but 20 cents on the dollar gets issued for every dollar asked for, 20 cents gets issued as a grant. Very competitive.
Five to one.
About five to one.
Answer's 20% then.
Yep, we got one a couple of years ago that we're actually doing right now. But, but, five to one.
And Amy, do we have the money if we have that?
Yeah, to answer that part of the question, in the budget, you'll see there's a line item in capital for unspecified stormwater projects for $500,000, so it would come out of there.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Resolution Number 20, I'm sorry, is there any questions on that, discussion on that proposed resolution? Next is Resolution Number 2165, 2019, H-2O PA Flood Control Program. Again, Chatham-Glen Infrastructure Improvements. This is actually a $5 million grant that we'd be applying for with, I guess, a match of up to 10%, if the engineering costs exceed 10%. I'm sorry, a match, there's no match, but if the engineering costs exceed 10% or easements or exceed 10%...
Biggest in utility.
And utility relocation exceed 10% of, or...
Well, utility locations, let me back up for a second. This is a grant to put a big pipe in the ground that we talked about. We last made this application in 2011, the FEMA, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Association. Big pipe in the ground across the township line, up through the Chatham-Glen area. And any utilities that have to be relocated, which commissioners would be the biggest cost that would be on us, would be borne by the township. Any of the other costs we're talking about, easements or even engineering, will be dwarfed by utility relocations.
So the same question, what's the chance, what's the likelihood of getting that kind of...
This one might be a, this is the exact same grant we did for Winfield Drive, if the Board remembers years ago. 1.25 million to reconstruct the line channel on Winfield Drive. There is a little bit more money, well, there's a lot more money, and a little bit less competitiveness on the H-2O because it's really geared towards big projects. If we were going in for water or sewer, I'd tell you it's much more competitive. Flood control, we've got a little bit of a better chance. 50/50 would be strong, but we still have probably a little bit better chance in this small water and sewer project. Having said all that, one important thing, if we get it, the shovel will not go in the ground in 2020, because there'll be a tremendous amount of design associated with, and permitting associated with this. So, in terms of coordinating with Amy and budget and money going out, it would be 2021, 2022.
Okay. Thank you, David. Any questions? Next is Resolution Number 2161, 2019, Addendum Number One to our Climate Action Plan. This is consistent with the presentation made by the Chair of our Environmental Advisory Committee to adopt this resolution, an action plan. Does anyone have any questions or discussion on this? Okay. Next is the support of the township's 2019 application to the Commonwealth Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Alternative Fuels Grant Program. We're applying for an $8,000 grant to purchase a plug-in electric vehicle, and this is basically, the state gives, provides for grant money to pay for the differential cost between what it would cost to buy a regular car versus an electric vehicle. So this is the $8,000 differential. Is that correct, Amy, that we would...
Yes, $8,000 is the max differential for a passenger-type vehicle that we'd be looking for.
So we may or may not need that much, but...
It's up to a max of eight we could request, yeah.
Okay. So, does that need any formal action to the Board? Is it just a signature?
No, the grant application is due December 13th, and it requires a letter of support. So I, as the letter, as I drafted, if we could just publicly get support of our Board, and then you'll be comfortable signing it.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Then, under Contract Awards, under Brookline School Demolition, there was a bid opening today. Just want to clarify this, that this doesn't necessarily mean there'll be an award of a contract next week for the demolition of Brookline School. With the Board, this Board decided that we would, the next step in the process would be to understand what the cost would be to demolish the Brookline School. No decision has been made as to whether we're going to accept that bid or not. Is that fair? Fair enough?
That's good.
This Board? So what was the, Dave, maybe you could share with us what you know about the bid?
Bids came in today. There were 14 bidders, 13 bidders, it's a lot of bidders. We bid at this time of year on purpose. You tend to get more competitive bids. What we use, the term we use is the apparent low bidder, because we have to review the bid, confirm their bid, their bonding is adequate, confirm their references are at, but, so the apparent low bidder is a company called Empire Dismantling Corporation at $569,000. We will review the bid, tabulate the bids, and give the Board a certified tabulation of bids before the next, before the end of the week.
How long, this is important because how long are those bids, that bid is good for?
Bid's good for, we have 90 days to award the bid with no, with no requirement to get an extension from the low bidder. 90 days comes and goes, but you can always ask for an extension. They don't have to grant. We have 90 days.
So this Board does not really have to take any action?
Absolutely not.
For next week, next week, or for the next couple, 90 days?
Yep.
Until a decision is made as to whether we are going to take that building down or not.
Yeah, said differently, before you needed to decide on whether or not to award this contract.
Correct. Right. So there's no pressure on the Board to make a decision next week to award any contract?
Expected.
Okay?
We have discussion on this, right?
We can have discussion certainly if we want.
Look at it.
We can start discussion or continue, I should say, continue discussion because it's been ongoing.
I think...
And we also have the option to award if we decide...
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that.
So we have the option to award.
It's there, it's on the agenda if that's where the discussions go.
Correct.
I think in terms of where we are, everybody decided that we were in public, we wanted to have some numbers, so we might want to let Dave review the bids, and that way we can have the accurate number to continue the discussion.
Do you have it?
Well, by the end of the week. What we'll do is, we reviewed a bid, we reviewed a bid, bid requirements, checked their references. We have not worked with them in the past, so we check references, and then I will give a letter to the township with a certified bid tabulation with it.
Now, was that, was that low bid pretty much in line with what your gut was telling you?
Yeah, it's the numbers we gave, Amy.
Pretty much in line.
Pretty consistent.
Dave, when do you expect that we'll have cost estimates on Brookline, you know, a library at the Brookline School versus renovation?
The architect who's working for the District, Bernard, and gave Dave and I numbers right before Thanksgiving. We've looked at them, we started to tabulate them, and we started to put them in that apples and apples comparison. So, in the next, we anticipate no more than the next couple of weeks being able to summarize those and give them to the Board.
So we should have everything by January?
Yeah, yes. Dave, I think we're comfortable saying January.
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? Next is the Veterans Field Improvement Phase Two. This would involve moving the backstop and also cutting in a new infield. And we did get a low bid on, actually, a surprisingly low bid, which has been reviewed with a bidder, and they're holding, they're holding firm and agreeing to honor that bid. Oh, you want to review that with us, Brian, our Director, Parks and Rec Director?
Yeah, the, I don't know if this is on...
Phase two of...
This is phase two of the Veterans Field Project. Phase one was the redoing of the football field, resulting from the building of the township building. Phase two is the moving of the main backstop in the middle of the two fields, Field B, moving it back to allow for more space between the two fields, and then cutting in a new infield for that. And then the third phase would be the lighting, and that won't happen until next year.
Thanks for the update. Then next week, we have a number of proclamations to three Eagle Scouts and to retiring Commissioner Jim McGarrett, and also to the Bureau of Fire recipient award recruitment and retention. And that is the full agenda for next week. Anything else come before this board?
Can I mention one thing, Andy? Yeah, I just want to remind the public that next Friday night, Brookline Fire Company will host the Toys for Tots at 7:00 PM for the kids to come. Bring a gift for the toys. We've got plenty of buckets to put them in and then crates and all that. And also, we want to thank Brookline Firehouse and John Viola and the board at Brookline for allowing us to use the firehouse year after year, and Manoa Fire Company, which always gives us a nice donation. And we have Santa Claus coming from Brookline by way of Manoa. Okay, thank you.
Jim Byrne, is it?
Yeah, well, use Jimmy Byrne.
Okay. Anybody else?
It's good of Mr. Byrne to leave the department store Santa display to come here to our meeting tonight. Thanks.
One, sort of addendum to that. For those who are donating to the boxes for Toys for Tots throughout the township, Wednesday is the last day. Then they'll be collected after that. So if you're making donations, you have to do it by Wednesday if you're going to put them in any of the boxes that are located throughout the township.
Thank you. Any other, any other business come before this board?
Oh, you do adjourn.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.